We are here tonight for the zoning board of appeals Thursday, June 9th, 7:30 PM, 7:35 via Zoom. We are going to, we, Arthur called the meeting to order. We're going to do the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to put the flag up.
All right.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to do the roll call. We have Chairman Katz.
Here.
Member Semenovitz.
Here.
Member Berger. Richard Berger, I think I see you.
He's on mute.
Here.
Okay, and ad hoc member Robin Lukens.
Yeah.
Okay, us, member Meyer had to go into work. He works for O and R. They needed him for an emergency. And I do not see ad hoc member Friedman or member Sheldon Meyer.
So it would be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, to appoint Robin formally as a voting member of the zoning board for tonight's meeting.
So I hereby do that, appointing Ms. Lukens as a voting member of the zoning board of appeals for tonight.
I accept whatever.
Okay, thank you.
And all the liability that comes with it.
Okay. Um. Jacob, I know you said you read the minutes. Arthur, did you get a chance to read the minutes?
I didn't get a chance to finish them, but they looked okay.
Robin, you can't vote because you weren't here, but you read, you weren't at the last meeting, so.
Right, okay.
Richard Berger, were you able to read the minutes?
It's frozen.
So I'll, I'll need a motion for someone to approve the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
And I need a second.
I'll second it.
Give us a second motion.
Okay, and all in favor for the three that can vote.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, I, I didn't hear the vote.
Uh, Jacob Semenovitz motioned, Arthur Katz second, and Berger, Katz, and Semenovitz voted yes. Robin has to abstain because she wasn't at the last meeting.
Perfect, okay.
We're here for the public hearing on the application of Sam Rubin for a re-subdivision of land to readjust the existing lot line between properties by relocating the lot line to the south by approximately 55 feet. The applicant has applied for subdivision approval from the planning board for the lot line change. Lot 35 has existing non-conforming lot width and lot 36 has existing non-conforming front yard and front setback. Variances are being sought from Article 4, Section 210-28, 210 Attachment 5, Table, um, Table 5 of Bulk Requirements for R40 Residential District of Airmont zoning code as follows. I think I'm letting in Sheldon Meyer right, right now. Lot 35, lot width 160, 160 feet required, 155 feet proposed. Lot 36, front setback 50 feet required, 14.2 feet proposed, and front yard 50 feet required, 14.2 feet proposed. The property is located on the east side of South Airmont Road, approximately 60 feet south of Campbell Avenue. The lots are designated as Section 55.15, Block 3, lots 35 and 36 on the town of Ramapo tax map. The property is located in the R40 zoning district. Lot 35 is 86,016 square feet and lot 36 is 40,209 square feet. The property is located at 48-50 South Airmont Road, suffer New York 10952. Okay, um, Sheldon Meyer, are you on as Morgan Meyer? If you are, could you please advise for the record?
And on mute.
And yes, and please unmute and show yourself if it is you. Okay.
Hi, this is Morgan. I'm just here for a college class. I'm not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's okay. Thank you. You have the last name of one of our members that I came from. So thank you for identifying yourself. Okay, um, for the applicant, we have Paul Baum is the attorney and Rachel Burris from Civil Tech as the engineer. So Paul, leave it up to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Suzanne. Good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Baum. I'm the attorney for Sam Rubin. So we're here for this variance application. As Suzanne said for in her reading the public hearing notice, the applicant's been before the planning board because this is considered a re-subdivision of land. So we need subdivision approval from the planning board and the planning board referred the applicant to this board for the variances that he requires in order to complete the subdivision process. This is a, this is a unique type of subdivision and a unique type of variance application, I really should say. Because with this variance request, we're not creating any new conditions. And Suzanne, can I share my map, please?
Yeah, let me just do the share screen. One second. Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, can you all see my map here and my mouse?
Yes, now we can, yes.
So this is lot 35 located at 48 South Airmine Road. This is lot 36. Currently, the lot line between the two lots runs along this line right here and comes over and comes back. So this portion of the lot width for lot 48 is actually deficient right now. It exists and it's only 100 feet. Your code requires us to have 160 feet. So we have an existing non-conforming use. We're not shrinking it. We're actually increasing it by moving this lot line from here to here. We're picking up 55 feet and we're, we're increasing the lot width to create a, you know, to bring it more into conformity with the zoning code. So we will bring it to 155 feet instead of the 160 that's required by code, but as I indicated, it's only 100 right now. So if we do nothing, the 100-foot lot width is going to remain. With regard to the, the lot on lot 36, we have an existing condition that leaves the house only 14.2 feet from the designated street line. I want to blow this up a little bit. So the 14.2 feet runs to the designated street line, but to the lot line is actually 27.7 feet. And to the edge of pavement, it's probably another three or four feet. So we're probably at least 30 feet. This exists, this condition exists. It has always existed and will continue to exist regardless of whether this lot line is moved or not. So the point that I'm making is we're not creating any non-conforming conditions by moving this lot line. And what we are doing is bringing the lot width on lot 35 into greater conformity with the zoning code by increasing it from 100 to 155 feet. So that's the application in a nutshell. The reason for the lot line change is the owner of these two lots would like to have greater lot area on his main lot, 35, that he lives in. So he just wanted to move it over, gain a little bit more lot area for his lot and otherwise leave it alone. In all other respects, lot 35 is in full compliance with the zoning code, except for this pre-existing non-conforming condition that's probably has existed for 40, 50, 60 years. So we're not changing it. We're not decreasing it. We're just leaving it alone. And that's the application in a nutshell. So I'm going to stop sharing. And thank you for that presentation, allowing me to make that presentation. If the board has any questions, we have Rachel Burris from Civil Tech Engineering, the engineer for the project, is around to answer any of your questions as well as I'm here to answer any questions that I can for you.
So I have a question. How much will, how much will be now lot 35? Once.
In terms of what?
In terms of the width.
The width will increase from its existing 100 feet and it will now be 155 feet. So it's gaining 55 feet of lot width.
No, I'm sorry. Lot 36, almost will be.
Lot 36 will still have 40,290 square feet of net lot area. So it still complies with the R40 zoning requirement in terms of lot area.
And the width will be 163 and a half feet. So there's not enough width between the two to make them both compliant. There, there, the two of them combined don't equal 160 double, so that there isn't enough to have them both be compliant. This makes the larger lot more compliant than it is. And we held the lot line on the side to hold the 25 feet side setback off of the existing building. So to make lot 35 have a wider lot width, it would create a deficient side setback for the smaller lot.
Excuse me one second. Paul, is she going to be a witness of yours? So she has to be sworn in?
No, she's a professional.
She is the engineer for the project. You want to swear me in, you can, but that's who I am.
So the answer is I do not have to swear.
No.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Continue, please.
That's okay. Yeah, so if, if you made the larger lot any wider, it would have then created a side setback variance. So in this, by doing it this way, we didn't create a side, we held it so that the side setback is compliant. But either way, we couldn't have gotten to, there wasn't 320 feet total, so we couldn't get 160 on.
Okay.
And why are you doing this? Why are you changing it?
As Paul mentioned, the owner wanted to, the owner of the larger property, he owns both. He wanted to make his lot that's the larger one. He wanted to make it larger.
Want to make it what?
He wanted to make it bigger, larger.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this because he, I mean, is this because he wants to build on it? I just feel like there's something we're missing here.
No, there's an existing house on the property. It's, it's fully improved. There's a two-story frame dwelling, a two-story garage. She's got a pool. So no, he's not doing it to, to build more. He's just doing it because he wants to have a greater lot area. And if someday he should decide to sell lot 36, you know, he, he wants more area for his property.
But to be candid, it would allow him, if he wanted to, to build an addition without potentially having to come back before the zoning board.
Well, he could.
Or the, or the planning board.
He, he could, he can do that now, Danny's. He, he meets the bulk requirements and if he met all the setbacks, he can put an addition on this. This lot line is really not giving him, this lot line change is not giving him any greater ability to develop his property than, than he currently has right now.
Okay, I have one general question. The, we received a video from a neighbor showing a huge amount of water coming off his property, going into the neighbor's property.
Right.
What? Yes, so.
And Arthur, I have to apologize. I forgot to forward it to them until just before the meeting, so they honestly haven't really had a chance to look at it. Rachel and Paul, I just sent it and to Mr. Rubin. I apologize.
Okay, um, there was previously a building permit application, that building permit was pulled for work in his backyard. Um, is last night, I don't know if they've closed out that building permit. Okay, I didn't think so. So part of the improvements of that plot plan and that building permit includes drainage. So if he has not gotten the C O yet, if he hasn't closed out his building permit, that may mean that he's not finished with the work. But that is independent of this because this doesn't include any improvements to his property that are visible. This is really a lot line change.
Hold on, I'm totally confused. I thought I heard that he has no plans to add to the house and.
No, no, that was like, remember the old plot, remember what he was doing in the backyard?
And we had to get the arborist in.
Arborist was there.
And the pool.
I, I'm, I'm not speaking for myself. I'm speaking, this is a public hearing.
Okay.
I want the public to know.
Okay.
Because it seems to be in a bit of conflict between my interchange with Mr. Baum about the ability to, that he, I thought he said no plans to add to the house.
No, there's not.
But he's, I just.
No, no, this was the building permit from his backyard. Remember he was doing the backyard, the pool.
He was doing improvements in the back.
I do. All I'm saying.
I think you need to explain it to the public, Rachel.
Okay.
Heard in the past, so anyone who's listening for the public hearing and the benefit of the ZBA that they know. And then maybe Lou can comment on the building permit.
So a few years ago, he had a building permit for work doing, going on in his backyard. It was not for the house. It was for a pool and patios and outdoor improvements. Because the tree law has since changed, but at that time, based on the tree law in the village, he was before the planning board and had a very extensive review by the village as far as the drainage impact and any impacts from the change in the trees on the site. The village hired an arborist, as well as the applicant hired an arborist. The property was very thoroughly examined. Um, and actually, since that time, the village's tree law has changed. Um, so I don't even know how much of this would have occurred if it was in today's where things would have gone from today, at that point to today. But at that time, they did go and it was reviewed by the planning board. The village engineer reviewed it. And a building permit was issued and, and Lou can take over if there's anything else.
Thank you, Rachel. Yes, the permit in the rear of the property is still not done. It's still not closed. We're still waiting for as-built drawings and the drainage has not been installed or inspected by the village engineer. So that's still hanging out there open. But I also like to add, most of the flooding that occurred, occurred in the front of the property. And if you've driven by the property recently, because of the change in the tree law, all the trees in the front of the property have been removed and all the lower brush and grass has been removed from the surface. So you just have a big muddy lot. So none of the water is being absorbed by anything. That's why it's flowing into the lot next door.
Okay, so, so the videos were for the front. All right.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, I apologize for sending it late. I, I didn't dawn on me until I was sitting here that I never sent it.
The, um, so that, isn't there a law that you can't increase the runoff from your land or something? Didn't we have that?
Yeah, it's called zero net runoff.
Well, what happened here?
Well, I think that part of it is when you change your, some of it could be impacted by the tree law. So the whole plan was evaluated for the back. Now you change the tree law and.
But you, you, you have to come back before the planning board if you.
Yeah, so any, any concerns about drainage would be reviewed by the planning board. It's part of their review in general.
Thank you.
All the improvements in the back were on the plot plan and were part of the original permit. And drainage was designed for those improvements.
And you're working on revising the drainage for the site in light of the, uh, problems that are now occurring.
I'll talk to Lou offline about that between now and planning.
Okay, but it's harmless of hearing for tonight. It has, that has nothing to do with what we're discussing tonight. Is that correct?
No, because whether the property, he owns both lots. So whether the lot line is changed or not, he still owns them both. So he could take, he could change the trees and the grading um, independently of whether you grant the lot line change or not, since he does own both lots.
So he's very unlikely to sue himself, is what you're saying.
Yeah, he's not going to sue himself. I, I don't think he will.
Neighbor is very upset, though.
But I think the point here, Mr. Katz, is, is that condition exists today. We haven't changed the lot line. And that moving the lot line is not going to exacerbate that condition. It's not going to change the condition. But the applicant will work with the village to improve the situation. But this lot line change is not causing it, creating it. It's not allowing the applicant to do anything greater that will increase that, that problem.
Okay, so my question was basically, that has nothing to do with the application tonight that we're, before us right now?
I would agree with that statement.
You would want to agree with that?
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay, Dan, do you agree with that?
Uh, yes.
Yes, okay.
At limited purpose, yes.
Okay. You, Suzanne, you want to read in the record the correspondences we've gotten from, uh?
Sure. Um, the first one is the, from Rockland County Department of Planning dated May 26. We received a G M L. Basically, they're recommending some modifications. And they are asking that they comply with the highway, that the submitted drawing have clear depiction of the proposed driveway with dimensions provided. The removal of the existing driveway and its replacement with the proposed driveway must be referenced in the narrative summary. A review by Rockland County Health, which we have, and I'll read into it. Required by the, as required by this Rockland County Stream Control, a subdivision must be reviewed and signed off by the chairman of the Rockland County Drainage Agency before the county clerk can accept the plan. That's part of the process if it's approved. A review must be completed by Rockland County SOAR, which we have, and I'll go into that, and permits obtained. Number six, the configuration of the parking area for lot 36 will make it difficult for a vehicle to turn around. This represents a significant hazard. Vehicles must not back onto, back into the county highway. The parking area must be reconfigured to provide a turnaround area as required in Section 21048A of Airmont's zoning code. What, number seven, once the subdivisions approved, the filed map cannot, cannot be used to convey property, nor can the tax maps be updated with the lot changes until the deeds are filed with the county clerk, conveying the portions of the lots that are required to, to achieve the lot configuration indicated in the subdivision map. The applicant in the town must make sure the deeds are properly filed with the Rockland County clerk to ensure the tax maps are properly updated. And then they have their standard, uh, conditions. If any of the conditions are overridden, we must file a report with them. Uh, and that, that a report must be sent to the county commissioner of planning.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, um, Mr. Baum a question?
Certainly.
Okay, um, with regard to the G M L, I recognize that many, if not most, of these comments are more planning related than zoning related. But in light of the fact that this was sent to the zoning board, if you can't comply with certain of these conditions, then you would need to ask this board for overrides. If you can comply, then when you go back to the planning board, then I don't think you would need overrides. You, you would just leave it as is and we're going to comply with it. For example, number one, the applicant must comply with all the conditions of the Rockland County Highway Department's letter of May 13th, 2022. I know I'm jumping slightly ahead.
We, we've reviewed the G M L letter. We have no objections to anything they put on there. We're not seeking any overrides. We'll comply with all their comments and we'll accept all those comments as conditions.
And when it comes back to the planning board, they will be addressed. Correct?
Yeah, I, I mean, the only comment of significance that they had on here was the turnaround for the new driveway. We do have an adequate turnaround. So.
Yeah, but there's also comments in the May 13th Highway Department letter that is referenced in number one of the G M L. Are you going to be able to meet those conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we have no objection. We'll, we'll meet all those requirements. We'll meet all those recommendations.
Thank you.
And that'll be addressed at the planning board.
Yeah, they'll be addressed at the planning board. They'll be, sure. We, we will accept them as, as condition should this board vote favorably upon this application and we'll, we'll revise the plans and for submission to the planning board.
Okay, so we'll have those as conditions then, uh, when you, okay, fine. If, if there's an approval, those will be conditions to the approval. All right.
Okay, why don't I just continue? There's a letter from Town of Ramapo, Department of Public Works dated May 18th. Their standard letter about a sanitary SOAR review is required with the fee. All existing SOAR connections must be shown on all lots. If the SOAR is within 25 feet of the dry, what, dry wells, it must be encased in concrete. That's from Paul Gendansky, the engineer. Then we have a letter dated June 6th from Rockland County Health. Based on the information, they have no Rockland County Health approvals that are required. Letter dated May 19th from Rockland County SOAR. It's basically saying that it's not required to pay an impact fee with the Rockland County SOAR use law. And if anything changes in terms of the tax law and it exceeds two SOAR units, it would have to be re, if they, if the in-ground pool is rented out to the public or an accessory apartment or a house of worship, school, daycare center, or home occupation, then they request the, the right to have a further review and the owner possibly pay an impact fee. And that's from Joe Laffiantra. We discussed the video and the email from the resident Jane Jones dated Friday, June 3rd. And that was an issue that will be addressed by the planning board and, and Rachel and Lou will discuss that offline. I think that's everything.
Okay, um, and Mr. Baum, you'll agree with all that stuff that they want done. Is that correct?
Um, we, we have no objection to any of the agency correspondence that Suzanne just read. And we will accept them all as conditions to any approval that the board should give us.
Okay.
And if I could also mention, with regard to the application materials, a narrative summary was submitted by the applicant from Mr. Baum dated April 18th, 2022. The narrative describes why they're seeking the variances and why they believe that they're entitled to the variance. They also submitted a short form E A F. This was determined to be a type-two action, I believe, when they, well, it's, it is a type-two action. But I believe that was mentioned when they appeared before the planning board. Um, but I believe um that was mentioned when they appeared um before the planning board to get the referral um to appear before this board. So that's all. These are a part of the record.
So and that's been declared, right? In other words, the planning board declared there's a type two secret. Is that correct?
Well.
I believe so. They, this has been in play for almost a year. That they had. So it's been a while. I'd have to go back, but I'm ninety nine percent sure. Yes. And they did refer it. Just they had never, they first submitted, it was submitted improperly. I rejected it, sent it back, and then for months, like nine months, nothing was done. Till now.
Till now. Okay, okay. Um, do we have a a motion to open this to the public, open this hearing to the public?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
A second motion.
Second, Mr. Burger. Okay. Uh, okay, is there anyone from the public that wishes to be recognized?
If you would want to speak, please raise your hand. I'll call on you. You have three minutes to speak um for the public hearing. Uh, right now I don't see any hands raised. I don't see anyone on the telephone. There's no one from the public to speak.
Okay, um, then we have a motion.
Clear. Um, this was properly advertised, posted, noticed, et cetera.
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Okay, may I now have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close.
Check on the motion.
Second again, Mr. Burger. Uh, okay, um, is there any uh conversations that anyone in the board wants to have uh amongst the board members? I don't see anything going on.
Yeah.
Well, sorry, Mr. Meyer, you have something? Mr. Meyer, did you want to speak?
No, that's Mr. Savinovitz. Did you want to speak?
No, I got my question answered.
Oh, okay.
Okay, all right, then um we're ready for a motion. Um, is anyone want to make a motion on the on the application?
Make a motion to vote.
Make a motion to what? I can't hear you.
To approve, to disapprove, to.
To approve.
Onifications.
Based based on the fact that uh Mr. Rubin uh owns both pieces of property and it's a minor change. It really doesn't affect anything other than moving the lot line. I think that it makes perfect perfectly good sense to approve.
Okay, so you're uh, was that a vote yes? Was that a second?
Yes.
That was a vote yes to approve.
Vote to approve.
Well, hold on, we need.
We need a motion.
Make a motion.
A motion.
I need a motion to approve and a second before I do a roll call.
Right. Let's be clear what motion is.
What you're motioning to approve.
Who who now I lost who's speaking? Is that Miss Semenovitz speaking or?
And Dan Krauscher. Um, so the applicant has applied um for two variances. Um, is that accurate?
Great.
Great.
I see thirty six. It just had the same number. So it was a little confusing. So um do I hear a motion to approve the following variances for lot thirty five? Lot with one sixty required, one fifty five proposed. For lot thirty six, front setback fifty feet required, fourteen point two feet proposed. And front yard fifty feet required. I don't know, front yard what? Front yard. Just front yard?
Oh.
Front yard requirement and a front setback requirement.
Okay, uh fifty feet required, also fourteen point two feet proposed. That's what threw me off. Um, property is located on the east side of South Armont Road, approximately sixty feet of Campbell Avenue. And the lots are designated as section fifty five point one five, block three, lots thirty five and thirty six on the Town of Rambo tax map. And the property is located in the R forty zoning district. Uh, lot thirty five has eighty six thousand sixteen square feet. Lot thirty six uh is forty thousand two hundred nine square feet. Um, is that what those two lots will have after uh assuming that these variances are approved, will they still have that uh uh square footage for each? Uh, Rachel?
No.
The net lot area is listed and the net lot area is based on the um after the net, after the land transfer, the deduction for the area in the D S L and the deduction for the area that's in the right away. So the the areas that are listed in the bulk table, which both are over forty thousand square feet, net lot area, those include the deductions. So your gross lot area on both of them is higher. The net lot area is still exceeds forty thousand square feet as required.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, Dan, are uh, is the motion ready?
I think we lost Dan.
What?
Oh, oh, you're there. You're just your camera. I don't know. Something happened. I can't see you very well. Okay, now I can see you.
So Dan, have you completed uh what you're suggesting to be the motion?
Uh, I think I just read it.
Okay.
Uh, to either approve or disapprove.
Right, okay. So we have a a motion now to either approve or disapprove uh the motion as presented by Mr. Crash Hour.
I I make a motion to approve what Mr. Crash Hour just read as far as approving this goes.
I'll second that.
Second, okay. Um, okay, now let's pull the roll for a vote.
Okay, uh, Mr. Burger?
I vote to approve.
Any reason?
I I stated it earlier.
Oh, I have that. I already have that. I'll put that in. Okay, um, Mr. Semenovitz?
I'll vote to approve the lot line. As I see, it's only like a five uh feet of difference, which is required. So I'll vote to approve.
That's after, that's after uh the motion. I mean, that's not what it is now.
Again?
Okay.
What?
That five feet is if the motion is approved, then you.
Correct. So that's why I I'll approve it. That's the reason why I'll approve it.
Okay, next.
Okay, um, Ms. Ms. Lukens?
Um, I vote to approve it because it's not detrimental to anybody involved.
Okay. And Chairman Katz?
I also vote to approve uh because um I agree that this is not going to be detrimental to anyone and with should improve the situation as it is, making the lots more closer to compliance than they are now.
And to be clear, um, all board members uh read um Mr. Baum's uh narrative where um, he discusses the five factors that the board needs to consider. Um, and that um based on those factors, you believe that the applicant is entitled to the variances being sought here tonight.
Yep, that's.
Uh, okay, so Suzanne, it's uh.
Motion carries four to zero unanimously.
Okay.
And if I could just add, um, applicant has to return.
Professional fees and.
Yes, but the applicant also has to return uh to the planning board for uh uh subdivision approval, um, address the items raised in um the G M L uh and any other correspondence that we received uh including but not limited to the Rockland County uh Highway Department and the concerns of at least one of the neighbors uh with regard to apparent existing uh drainage conditions uh that are apparently affecting uh a neighbor or neighbors of the subject property.
Okay, so that's part of, that's part of what just got approved. What what would you say, Mr.?
Yes.
Well, the board members make that determination.
Okay, so let's attach it to um to the motion and that's been approved.
Okay, I'm writing that down. Attached to motion of approval.
As conditions.
As a condition.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, okay, so are we uh, so this case is closed?
Yep, motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody, good to see you all. Good to see you all there. Okay.
Okay. Um, just for new business, there's one. Good night. There's one more training class coming up next Thursday. Uh, June sixteenth from seven to nine on the webinar uh Zoom. It's the session three working groups. It's for planning boards. Um, I was hoping that most of you, if possible, took the zoning board. If you couldn't, you might want to take this. Um, it is session three, but you will have to take the one for the board that you're on. Um, that won't be, the zoning one won't be offered again until next spring. But at least the hours will count towards your four hours. And if you go over the four hours, your hours will be carried over for one year. So if you say you have six hours this year, you'll have two that will carry over to the following year. So.
Suzanne, when I, when I give um uh my ethics class does.
I I get that. I get that approved. I will um I I will have to talk to Adam. In the past, I've always dealt with Darlene Miller, but I don't see any issue dealing with Adam Carson now that she's retired. Um, and I'll do the same to make sure when you give the class that they get the credits for that as well. We have.
Helen Burrow.
Oh, yeah, Helen's still there. Yeah, I'll go to Helen and and Adam. But I think Adam's running all the training courses, but I'll go to him first. I don't want to step on toes. And if not, I'll go to Helen. Um, and that's, we do have one application for July. Um, and uh I did.
We originally had two.
We originally did have two. Um, no, no, that was planning board, Dan. That was planning board that we got the German today.
Okay.
Do we know if Zoom has been uh continued authorization?
Um, I keep asking Dan like every other day if you could find out. I I haven't heard anything, but Dan's the guru on that.
I have not heard anything either formally or informally. Um, I will check on it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm working on some litigation uh for the village uh all the past couple of days.
Okay, so um, any other business, Suzanne?
No, that's it.
All right, so have a great summer or at least till July.
And I'll keep everyone.
Why don't we formalize that, Mr. Chairman? And does anyone want to make a motion to uh adjourn this meeting?
Okay, who makes the motion?
Make the motion. To adjourn the meeting?
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Semenovitz, the second, um, in all favor.
Hi.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Bye.
And Morgan, if you need credits for school, oh, she's gone. I was going to say she can get something written from the village. I know they did that in the past. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Have a great night.
You. Bye.